Good afternoon. I didn't realize for your lives, wasn't even thinking that way, but welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Superior Court update. One of our monthly check-ins with Superior Court. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board. Commissioner Caroline Mejia is zooming in and Commissioner Edwards, our Vice Chair, is excused this week. We are live streaming and the public can follow along through the Thurston County YouTube channel. So we have just an open agenda today. We have till 2 o'clock if we need it. We have Judge Schaller, Christine Schaller with us, as well as the County Manager Ramiro Chavez and Assistant County Manager Robbie Campbell as well. So really, we like to start with the court and see what issues you want to address with the board and then we can go back and forth as needed.
Well, I wanted to start out by indicating, as I believe everyone has heard because we made an announcement, but we did appoint a new juvenile court administrator. We appointed Ted Bryan as our juvenile court administrator. He has been our detention manager for about eight years. We were really pleased with the entire recruitment process and we had some very good qualified applicants and we were very pleased that he accepted the position. He was acting as the interim juvenile court administrator really since November because Mike Fenton was on leave for, I don't know, two months or two and a half months before he retired. So it's been a very seamless transition so far. There's a lot going on with the juvenile department in this transition. Obviously, new leadership, looking at our caseloads and jumping in on budget, both TST and the general fund budget. Also, an issue has been raised by the Board of County Commissioners related to detention beds and whether or not it's appropriate to contract any of those beds. So we just started working on that issue and putting together information related to that. And we'll have something in a timely manner to the Board of County Commissioners. But that's been really great and the detention manager position has been posted. And we have first round interviews set at the end of the month. We have a tight timeline on the cutoff and the review of the applications and the like. So we don't have a huge period of time when we don't have a detention manager so that Ted doesn't have to continue to do double duty. On the family court side, actually yesterday and most of today, I have been attending an all sites meeting related to a technical assistance grant that we received to improve our dependency process. We actually received the grant about four years ago when I was Chief Judge before at Family and Juvenile Court. I applied for it and then Judge Hirsch took charge of that project. And we meet yearly with all the other sites across the country and talk about improvements that we're making, get ideas from each other and the like. And it's especially timely because of COVID and coming out of that and looking at what our proceedings will look like going forward. It's very helpful to be talking with other jurisdictions about what they are doing. We had expected at Family and Juvenile Court that the non-peril custody statute would be repealed on June 30th. We were acting on that belief, I guess for the lack of a better term, because the repeal of the law was basically suspended by the governor while Washington remains in a state of emergency. And we thought that that might change on June 30th. And so I talk about that only because we dealt with the majority of all of our non-peril custody cases prior to that date. And we had a huge number of those, a huge number of trials, the first six months of the year. Judge Lanese and I basically had a non-peril custody trial almost every single week between us. Sometimes both of us were hearing them and it's a relief to kind of be done with that work and be able to focus on our family law trials and of course, our dependency fact finding trials as well. ITA work. As you know, we changed our calendaring, I believe, effective with February 1st, where we now have full days of ITA hearings twice a week and we have half day ITA hearings twice a week. So a total of three days total. That's been going well. And there was a request from the hospitals or the mental health facilities that we consider a change and we vetted the change and got feedback from stakeholders and we expect that we'll be just making a slight calendaring change starting in September. We continue to hope. I know that Pam has been in discussions with Mark Freeman about the potential of a different courtroom being built at the triage because there's some sort of remodel or something going on there. We're hopeful that maybe that will be accomplished and we could have an ongoing courtroom in that facility, which would be very, very useful from the court's perspective to have a designated courtroom where we'd be hosting all of our ITA hearings. There are ongoing issues with ITA hearings and facilities and whether or not they're timely, being ready for hearings and getting materials filed and we continue to meet regularly with the stakeholders involving those issues. We also, at our last ITA team meeting, which was last month, there was a concern raised by St. Peter's Hospital about law enforcement not engaging in actively helping people.
Sorry, Judge.
That's okay. About law enforcement not really actively assisting the mental, the DCRs when they're out and about in the community and they have an individual, they want to get that person transported for emergency mental health and consideration of an involuntary treatment. And law enforcement is, from their reports, indicating that they can't do that unless the person will voluntarily come with them. And so they're seeing people who are in a terrible mental health crisis, having basically no services provided to them because they can't get them where they need to be. We have also heard that when a Joel's petition is filed and those are when an involuntary treatment act case is not filed, but a family really believes that the person should be involuntarily committed, allows a family to come forward and petition the court and ask the court to order the evaluation happen, that law enforcement is not enforcing the orders when they're entered by the court. And I believe that the county commissioners are familiar with this issue and that law enforcement, I think, is in an incredibly difficult position with the changes in the law. By all of these statements, I'm not criticizing law enforcement or the decisions that they're making, but because of what the reality is for the community and for people with mental health issues, we have requested a meeting with the mental health treatment providers, the DCRs, who are involved in the ITA work and law enforcement and the prosecutors in defense to talk about whether or not there can be any understanding about how these situations are going to be handled in the future because the DCRs also feel at risk when they are out and law enforcement doesn't respond or comes and then leaves. So it seems to be kind of a big issue that I think that we are facing at this, at this time. And for the main campus, I don't have a large update. I just know that the court continues to be ready and available to run trials. There are weeks when we don't have a criminal trial that's ready to go and that's because lawyers aren't either, aren't confirming or continuing the trials. I know that next week there are no confirmed criminal trials. I know that the court continues to be very interested in ensuring that we can address the backlog. We still have a lot of people in jail awaiting trial. I'm not at that building right now, so I'm not trying to guess what the current issues are, but I know that that continues to be because we talk about it at Board of Judges, a real focus of our discussions about getting trials out and also how we will deal with the Blake cases as they start coming back for resentencing. So that is my, my court update.
Okay, that was a lot. So a lot of stuff going, I mean, a lot of detailed stuff too. Commissioner Mejia, anything you want to ask about or respond to, go for it.
Not any specifics. Just good to see Judge Schaller again.
Commissioner Mejia, your connection is, is a little bit off. I think I heard her say it was nice to see Judge Schaller again.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. No, yes, it's great to see Judge Schaller again. In terms of the update, I do not have any comments, but I did have a question in regards, you mentioned kind of in regards to the juvenile jail and I was wanting to ask more specifics on that. Okay, so just as some background, back in 2019, someone from the County Commissioner's Office in Grace Harbor reached out to Mike Fenton, who was the juvenile court administrator at the time, and said something to the effect of, hey, would Thurston County be willing to contract detention beds to us? So as we have gone back and looked at emails and the like, there, Mike Fenton talked with Judge Hirsch and Judge Wilson and reached back out and said that we were willing to have a conversation about it to find out more specifically what they were looking at. Mike then also talked with the equivalent juvenile court administrator in Grace Harbor. And the juvenile court administrator said they were not, and I just found, since Mike is gone, finding these emails is kind of difficult, but I was able to have someone do a search and found some of the emails that the juvenile court administrator indicated that they didn't, the juvenile court wasn't really interested in that. But Mike had reached out to the person in the County Commissioner's Office who had contacted him and said, you know, we're willing to have these conversations and she said, well, I'm going on vacation and I'll contact you when I get back. And then there were, there was nothing further. Never heard from him again until apparently recently. Within the last couple of weeks, myself, Ted Bryan, Judge Price is the presiding judge and Pam is our court administrator, met with Romero. And Romero indicated that the Board of County Commissioners were interested in finding out more information because Grace Harbor and apparently Mason County also are interested potentially in contracting beds from us in our juvenile detention facility. And I could, I could talk a lot about my, my feelings, not the Board of Judges feelings, but my feelings on this topic based upon my experience in this building. But I don't know that that would be useful. We are putting together the information that Romero has requested related to numbers, how many beds we have, what it would take to get that portion of our facility back up into running condition and what that, what that could potentially look like and to point out policy considerations and things like that. And I had indicated to Romero that we would appreciate if we could have, I know that this is budget time and so I'm sure the commissioners are very interested in what this could look like because it could impact the budget. But I asked that we could have six weeks to two months because Ted has so much going on coming into his position right now that we're working on. And I want us to be able to put together a very accurate and reasoned information for the Board of County Commissioners.
Just for Commissioner Mejia and Judge Schaller, just to set a little bit of context as how this issue arose. I was contacted by a Mason County Commissioner who I know through WASAC, who sent out, I believe it was just to Grace Harbor and Thurston and said, was there any, they just wanted, the commissioner was never clear what exactly Mason County's issue was they were trying to solve. She just was inquiring about the availability of contract bids. The Grace Harbor, and I was actually out for a couple of days, so I was catching up on the email stream. The Grace Harbor Commissioner piped up and said, we asked Thurston County a year or two ago, just what the Judge, Judge Schaller was referring to, and Superior Court, you know, needed to have discussion or whatever, left it out there. And so, of course, I know that we have, you know, beds, so I just was trying to figure out, how do I respond to, I wanted to be responsive to my colleagues. So I just wanted to know some information about that conversation that Grace Harbor had had and I felt like the board should, you know. So I'll get to you in one second. I just, just wanted to make sure everybody understood where this was coming from. I did some follow-up with Commissioner Trask in Mason, who still wasn't really responsive to my, to my question of what problem exactly they're trying to solve. Are they, do they not have a facility? Are they, are they, have a facility that's overflowing or what is it they're trying to do? And she, she sent back information that really didn't answer my questions. So I still don't exactly know what question Mason County is trying to solve. She's also working on a policy level, state policy question for WASAC, so it may be related to a policy question, but she wanted to set up a tour. And I said, well, well, hold on. I mean, there's no point wasting time. If what you're trying to do is contract. If what you're trying to do is contracting beds and we're not going to do that, then I don't want to waste people's time setting up a tour, our time or their time. So that's why I asked Romero to kind of see where all these, all this history and stuff stood and so I could respond accurately and responsibly to Commissioner Trask and Mason.
Yeah, and at our meeting, Your Honor, with Judge Price and Pam and Ted, I expressed to you that this conversation of the, of the empty beds of the juvenile court has been a conversation the board had many times. And as a result, many ideas came up as I expressed to you and you responded, I believe, while you were Presiding Judge and some of those ideas, one of the ideas. And as I expressed to you, this is yet another idea. They perhaps we need to, that I, as I expressed to you, I personally have a specific expectation of the outcome. It's just going through the process, vet those ideas with the stakeholders, in this case, you know, the court, and see where it goes, if viable, feasible. And that's probably my obligation that I have to the board, just to bring those ideas, if there is an opportunity or not, and have a conversation at that level.
I mean, we know that Thurston County has contracted with Yakima and Lewis County for adults. So I know counties contract beds and it must make economic sense for them to do it or they wouldn't, wouldn't do it. So I don't want to incarcerate any more Thurston County juveniles. I like how our system operates. But if we could be helpful to another, another part of the state that is experiencing a different situation and it made economic sense the way it obviously does for Lewis and Yakima, I know, I thought I owed it to the board to just raise that issue for consideration. And obviously, the court's input is critical. So that's, that's. Yeah, go ahead.
We're working on, just starting, but working on putting together all of that information and talking about, and I, of course, am aware that the jail has, for adults, has contracted with other, other counties when there's been an overflow. And we'll, in our response, we'll talk about the policy considerations that we think are really important for the county commissioners to think about.
Well, I know, I'll just share, I mean, Director of Public Defense didn't like it because it, you know, he was kind of kicking it to that higher level of like, well, we're trying to get away from incarceration of juveniles, which is why I hundred percent agree, but I don't, that's why I was trying to get to the bottom of like, I don't know what Mason County situation is. If what they're trying to do is avoid building a new, you know, if they're just, they don't have what they need and this is a way for them to not have to build a facility, you know, it, I don't know that it, it doesn't per se, you know, it doesn't per se violate those same values and principles to contract out into a county that might need to avoid a worse outcome or a different direction, that's not the way we would want them to go. So I was just trying to say, look, you know, we don't really know what the situation is. You know, yeah, we don't want to be in the business of juvenile incarceration. I fully support that, but we don't know that that's what's going on.
Right. I have no, I have no information about Grace Harbor or Mason County or why they might be seeking this out. But separate and apart from mass incarceration of juveniles, not mass incarceration, but increased incarceration of juveniles, the whole, I mean, the difference between contracting with adults and juveniles with, with the youth, we are seeking to get them services within their community. We are seeking to connect youth within the community so that when they get released, they have a seamless transition from detention to their mental health services, to their anger replacement therapy, whatever it might be. We want to ensure that they have consistent and really good contact with their family. Their probation counselors are housed in the same building and go and see them almost every single day when they're in our, perhaps every single day of the week at least, when they are in our juvenile facility. None of that would be available if we were simply housing youth from other counties. And that, that's just for you to think about and that's going to be in the policy considerations, but that's one of the big issues and the differences between adults and youth because with adults, we truly are just housing them, either pending their, their trial or first sentence, first sentence that they're serving. With youth, it's very different.
Commissioner Mahia, did you get that question answered? You're still, it's still your floor.
Yeah, I did. A lot of context that went into it, but other than that, no, thank you. That was, that answered my question.
Okay. I was curious, I didn't quite understand your response, Judge, about the non-criminal custody statute. Did it get repealed on June, or it got extended?
It's, it continues to exist because the repeal will not actually happen until the governor removes the state of emergency.
Okay.
And to ensure that we could try and get those cases completed, we worked under a June 30th deadline because we had estimated that's when the state of emergency might end.
Right.
And then it didn't. So the law continues in effect as it relates to existing cases. New cases cannot be filed.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you. Yeah, I don't know, just kind of adding on to what you said about 1310 and the law enforcement response. I mean, it seems to me like they could fix this with one sentence that just, I don't have the numbers handy, but there's like 7105 or something like that, or 7305, where it basically authorizes law enforcement to be involved in assisting with a detention for mental health. And then there's this new law and they never really added the extra sentence they could have that said, nothing in this section supersedes or, you know, overrules law enforcement's ability to, you know, act in compliance with 7105 or whatever that number is. So, but they didn't put that in, so now you've got an ambiguity and as I understand it, law enforcement is just saying, well, it's not clear, so we're going to take the conservative approach and not subject ourselves to disciplinary action liability, et cetera. I've seen some legal opinions that say they shouldn't be reading those two, it's inconsistent. And, but it isn't clear, so, but it seems like a pretty simple way to clarify that, if that's the intent of the legislature, which it sounds to me like it is. So hopefully, they'll be able to do that because it's really frustrating to know. I mean, you know, you can go to the court and the Attorney General opinion and stuff, but it's like, if that's not what the legis, if that's not what legislators wanted, like that's the kind of law, that's the, that's the long way around, right? To go through there, to try to clarify two conflicting statutes when, if all along, the intent was to have them not be conflicting, then the legislature can act much more swiftly if they, if they want to.
Well, I certainly hope that they do because that is a big issue right now and we're only going to see more and more problems or the situation where nothing happens until things escalate so far that the person ends up getting arrested on a felony and taken to jail. We also had another incident, I have not heard an update, but we had a youth who was on warrant status within, this is within the last week. And as I think you know, the Supreme Court changed the parameters. To get a warrant for a youth is very difficult. Now they changed the rules and it's only when there's a, really a significant safety threat that the court can issue a warrant. And so the court had issued a warrant for this youth's arrest. Law enforcement saw him in a homeless encampment and tried, and approached him and tried to talk to him. He ran, but they can't pursue or they don't believe they can pursue. So they didn't pursue him. And a day or two later, they found him non, unresponsive. I believe it was in a hotel. And the last I heard, he was basically in a coma, non-responsive at the hospital. And so we have a lot of deep concerns. And again, I'm not criticizing, I'm not criticizing law enforcement. The law that's been put in place puts a lot of changes for them to try and grapple with and a lot of liability that they could face if they don't adhere to the new law. But there are so many ramifications that I hope can be addressed. And that's not something, obviously, the county commissioners can address, but I just think it's a big issue within our community. This is not the last time we're going to see this. And I, I hope that, like you said, Commissioner Menzger, that the legislature can take some action to clarify a couple of things that were likely not their intention.
Okay, and I guess my last, I agree, my last sort of interesting response to your, the issues you went through is just about the criminal trial, you know, the status of these cases that we understand, you know, backlog, tsunami, you know, thousands of cases, like trial confirmations of, you know, dozens and dozens of cases. And so I guess it's a little surprising that, that what you're reporting about they're not, you know, there not being cases ready to go. And it doesn't sound like from reading your comments that it's not an indication that there isn't this backlog still there waiting, but it's just, I know, I know in any, I guess, so my question is, are the trial confirmation calendars really, really high? And it's just kind of a quirk of particular week that a case isn't ready to go? Or can you say a little more about that?
So yes, I mean, confirmations continue to be a high number. And, you know, I just wanted to highlight, because I think it's unusual that we don't have a criminal case that's ready to go at all. There's none on our trial list, but it is August. And that may play into it because lawyers are on vacation. I didn't do the trial confirmation calendar, I don't know, but I know the commissioners are obviously very interested in the backlog issue and what kind of trials are going. And that's why I reported on the issue. I would say that we do have, although we have no criminal trials next week, there is a civil jury trial that's scheduled and there is an unlawful detainer trial that is scheduled as well. So it's not that we're not doing any trials, just not any criminal trials.
I'm sure the civil bar is happy to take advantage of that.
Very much so.
Okay, good. County Manager?
No.
Anything? Okay.
Do you have any questions for us, Your Honor?
Just if you know anyone who is a super smart administrator who wants to work for the court, please tell them that we have an opening and that they should apply. As you know, we're super sad to be losing Pam, but very excited for her and the new opportunity that she, that she has. But she's been an amazing court administrator for us the last five years or so and she'll be greatly missed. So that's all I have.
I was teasing her about one-upping Alex Fricks, you know, who went up to Orcas Island. I was like, I didn't think anybody could outdo that, but Hawaii's pretty good.
Hawaii's pretty good.
All right. Well, thanks, Judge. Appreciate your time today.
Thank you very much also. Bye.
Thank you.